All right, we'll now call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can we do the roll call?
Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Brandau. Vice President Capriolio. Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Quintero. Councilmember Soria. And Council President Vainz.
Here. All right, if we can all stand. We're now going to have our invocation by Pastor Bob Small, the Northwest Church, and remain standing because immediately following, we will salute our flag.
Would you bow with me, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege to be here this morning, and we pray your blessings upon this meeting, and we ask that you would lead and guide and direct the council members in the business of the city of Fresno. We ask for your blessings upon each and every friend and member that is attending, and we ask you all of these things. In the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we do pray.
Face the flag, ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the
All right, we have a couple ceremonial presentations this morning. First up, we're going to have the proclamation of Zachariah Lovick Day by Councilmember Brandau.
You beat me up here. Good deal. Thank you, Todd. Fantastic. Hey, good morning, everybody. I want to introduce a friend and a great asset to our community. This is Zachariah Lovick. Is that the way you say your name, Lovick? Okay, I think there's a city in Texas named Lovick. Did you know that? Is that named after you? Zachariah, how old are you?
Eight.
Todd, is this microphone on? Okay. You're eight years old, and where do you live in Fresno? Somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And which school do you go to?
Big Garden.
Big Garden Elementary, right? Good. Well, you're here for something that you've been doing at your school. What Zachariah has been doing is taking care of fellow students of his that can't quite afford all of the things that they need for their classroom and their school. And he created a very unique way of doing that, and I'm going to let him tell us about it, okay? So you're going to hear it from him, and then he's got a speech written, too. I'm going to let you read your speech, but before you do it, before you read your speech, why don't you tell us exactly what you've been doing for your fellow kids?
I started a school supply drive.
And then, how do you give them the supplies?
Like, I make the number of backpacks that I donate each month, and like, at the end of every month, I donate to the school I want to.
Oh, and so really, you give the kids that need the supplies, you give them all their supplies in a brand-new backpack, isn't that right? Now, how many backpacks have you passed out?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three backpacks to his fellow students. That is fantastic. Yeah, that's fantastic. And so, you have a little speech you wanted to read, and we're going to let you read. It's going to be real loud, then I'm going to read a quick little proclamation, and then we're going to recognize you and give you a nice gift, but let's start by hearing your speech.
Thank you for having me here today. My name is Zachariah Lovick. I started Zachariah School Supply Drive in August of 2015. I have donated sixty-three backpacks filled with supplies. My goal is to donate to one school per month until May. In August of 2016, I want to have a carnival with a school supply giveaway to children in need. I like donating backpacks to help my classmates have the supplies they need to become better students.
Fantastic. Let's get -- good deal. And Zachariah, your speech is probably more, is better than my speech, and it's definitely more interesting. But I do want to read a proclamation from the city of Fresno for Zachariah. Whereas Zachariah Lovick is being recognized today for his selfless efforts to help disadvantaged youth in the community by starting a school supply donation drive, and whereas Zachariah, a second grader at Fig Garden Elementary, was shopping for school supplies when he learned that some of his fellow students' families could not afford to purchase them, Zachariah came up with a plan to collect backpacks and school supplies for these students. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, and Zachariah, that's all of us up here, we, the City Council of Fresno, commend Zachariah Lovick for his dedication to help students in need, and do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 29, 2015, to be Zachariah Lovick Day. Yay! Good deal. So I'm going to give you that, Zachariah. That's for you to keep, but proclamations for eight-year-olds are just a little bit boring, so we took it to a different level. We wanted to give him this trophy. Zachariah, that trophy's got your name on it, and it says, it's pretty heavy. Can you hold it?
Yeah.
Yeah, good deal. Good deal. And all it says is that we thank you for doing this for your fellow students. We do have one more thing for Zachariah today. We have twelve backpacks that we want to give to him for his next round. What's that? Donated by Walmart. Thank you, Lindsay. We have twelve backpacks donated by our friends at Walmart when they heard about this project that Zachariah is doing. So Zachariah, we have your next twelve backpacks. We don't have the supplies, but that's what you're good at, is raising those supplies and filling those backpacks, and we really appreciate it, okay? Do you want to have your mom come up here, and maybe your grandma, and take a picture with us?
Could sit down with us?
Yeah. Yeah, let's set that down for now. I'll tell you, why don't you hold that trophy, and we'll let your mom hold this. All right.
Steve, why don't you have one of the backpacks down?
Good job. I'll balance this photo off by jumping over here. Got it, Howard?
Last one?
All right. Well, thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Good job, Zachariah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet, Mallory. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a proclamation of Juan Felipe Herrera, United States Poet Laureate Day
Good morning, everyone. I am extremely honored and very excited to actually have our 21st U.S. Poet Laureate here today with us. It's a pretty big deal. President Obama just appointed him earlier this fall, so to have someone that not only has Central Valley roots be here today, but also to have someone of his caliber in terms of his artistic capacity and what he is known for is very, very exciting. And so I want to thank him for making the time. I know that it took us some time to coordinate a date that worked for us. As you can imagine, he's a pretty busy guy, just being named the 21st U.S. Poet Laureate, and so we are very excited to have him here this morning. I will just share a little bit about him, but let me give you this plaque with this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So, just a little bit about Juan Felipe. He was previously, he had previously served as a California State Poet Laureate from 2012 to 2014. Mr. Herrera is the second newest poet laureate from the Central Valley. So as you guys can see, we definitely have talent here in the Central Valley, and we should be very, very proud of the artists that we have here in our community. So the first Central Valley poet laureate was Philip Levine, and so, again, this is a very true testament of just the flourishing art community here in Fresno and in our community. And it is especially important to note that our nation's newest poet laureate is also the first Latino to ever serve in this role. As a Latina, as the first Latina to sit for, to represent District One here in the City Council, it makes me proud to be able to say that we continue to break those ceilings at every level, and so I'm very proud to say that he is the first Latino to serve as poet laureate. Mr. Herrera and his work are a part of a changing face of the United States, and having his voice heard at the national level will help elevate our Central Valley. Born in Fowler in 1948 to migrant farmworker parents, Mr. Herrera overcame barriers of language, culture, and poverty to go on and attend some of our finest institutions of higher education, which include UCLA, Stanford, and Iowa's Writers Workshop. Mr. Herrera crafted a unique writing style and poetic voice over his career that draws upon his experience as a child migrant worker in the Central Valley, a youth and adolescent in San Diego's Logan Heights, and a young developing artist in San Francisco's Mission District. For over forty years, Juan Felipe Herrera has taught throughout California, including here locally at our dear Fresno State. He also served as Chair, excuse me, as Chair of the Chicano and Latino-American Studies Department, as well as the University of California, Riverside. In addition to teaching our youth, Mr. Herrera has authored over twenty-five literally works and has received countless accolades and fellowships throughout his distinguished career. Our city and the entire Central Valley is truly privileged to have one of the greatest literary talents in our nation with us today and representing us at the national stage. Thank you so much again for making the time and for being here. It is truly an honor. Over the next couple days, we have a couple of events happening where we will be celebrating and honoring him for the work and for accomplishing such tremendous recognition, and so we want to thank you for making the time to be here with us this morning. So if you want to say a couple words before we read the proclamation onto the record.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Soria, and Councilmembers, everyone. I really appreciate this honor. I'm very humbled by it. My parents, indeed, were migrant farmworkers all their lives and gave me many stories and many words, and the words of my ancestors and their words and their struggles and their lives. And that is how I began as a writer, with my imagination and my life, their life, and I went on to listen to the stories of all our dear friends and all our families, all our students, all workers, all laborers, and all peoples here in Fresno and the valley and throughout the nation. And it's an honor for me to receive this award and this proclamation, and I also want to congratulate Zachariah Lovick for all his good work, and I know he's going to reach many great heights, and I thank his family for being so supportive of him and the council here, the City Council, as well. So it's a great honor for me, Councilmember Soria. I want to invite everyone to be part of Casa de Colores, a project that I have started at the Library of Congress, for everyone to submit their words and their poetry every month and nationally, especially here in Fresno, which is the heart of creativity. People always ask me, "Why do we always hear of Fresno as a city of poets?" And I said, "Because it is a city of poets, and we have great peoples here with a lot of creativity." So I thank you so much from my heart, from my family, and from everyone at the Library of Congress, and we are on the map, everybody, and I am here to serve everyone. Muchas gracias. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you for accompanying us this morning. Thank you for putting Fresno on the map, on the positive list, because we always love to see and highlight the positive things coming from Fresno. So thank you so much again. I do want to invite everyone. We will be having a ceremony to honor Juan Felipe Herrera tomorrow at 5:30 to 7:30 at the Smith Camp Alumni House at Fresno State. We're working closely with President Castro, and so we will be there tomorrow evening to continue the celebration with this great honor. So thank you again for being here. City Clerk, if we could read the proclamation for the record?
Whereas California poet Juan Felipe Herrera was appointed by President Barack Obama as the 21st United States Poet Laureate. Beginning service on September 15, 2015, Herrera joins a long line of distinguished poets who have served as poet laureate, and he is the first Latino ever in our nation's history to serve in this position. And whereas Juan Felipe Herrera was born in Fowler, California in 1948 to migrant farmworker parents and spent his early life working alongside his family harvesting seasonal crops throughout our state, Herrera was one of the first wave of Latino students to receive the Educational Opportunity Program Scholarship to pursue higher education and went on to earn a bachelor's degree from UCLA, as well as master's degrees from Stanford University and the University of Iowa Writers Workshop. And whereas, growing up as a campesino in the 1960s and attending college in the 1970s during the Chicano movement inspired Juan Felipe Herrera to develop a writing style largely influenced by three distinct Californias: the small agricultural towns of the San Joaquin Valley he experienced as a child, San Diego's Logan Heights where he graduated high school, and San Francisco's Mission District, which nurtured his artistic talents. And whereas, for over forty years, Juan Felipe Herrera has taught throughout California in prisons, juvenile halls, migrant camps, and universities, including California State University Fresno, as the Chair of the Chicano and Latin American Studies Department. In addition to teaching our youth, Herrera has authored hundreds of works of poetry, short stories, young adult novels, and children's literature, including his recent work, Portraits of Hispanic American Heroes, a picture book showcasing inspiring Hispanic and Latino-Americans. And whereas, Juan Felipe Herrera has received countless accolades and fellowships, including the National Book Critics Circle Award, the Guggenheim Fellowship, the Breadloaf Fellowship, Hungry Mind Award of Distinction, Latino Hall of Fame Poetry Award, National Endowment of the Arts Writers Fellowship, Smithsonian Children's Book of the Year Award, the Stanford Chicano Fellowship, and he served as the poet laureate of California from 2012 to 2014. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Fresno, recognize Central Valley native Juan Felipe Herrera as the United States Poet Laureate, and do hereby proclaim October 30, 2015, to be Juan Felipe Herrera Day.
All righty. We will now move to the approval of the minutes from the October 22, 2015 meeting. Do we have any changes to the minutes? I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Now we have councilmember reports and comments. Any councilmembers with anything to report? Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. I had the pleasure of doing a ribbon-cutting at the Discovery Center recently, this past Saturday. It was the Discovery Center Discovery Youth Garden, and I want to give out a special thanks to the Junior League of Fresno, a great group of hard-working women that really put a lot of time and effort and treasure into this wonderful, wonderful thing for the Discovery Center. The Fresno Association of Realtors and the National Association of Realtors supported this vision with a grant of $2,200, and they came out and supported this Discovery Center event, and it was a really, really fun day, and kids were there, and they can see food from seed to table, and give them education on nutrition and the value of agriculture to our community. So it was a great event. And then Tuesday was a day of celebration at City Hall. City Manager Rudd, and some of us were there to congratulate again all the FPD employees, officers that were sworn in, and second, congratulations to all the City of Fresno employees that celebrated ten, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, or forty years of service to the city. It was amazing. And there was a special award for one of our colleagues up here. I don't know if you can guess who it is. So I looked down the dais at him with a big smile. He actually received a twenty-year pin of service. Sal Keentaro, our very own Sal. Good job, Sal. And thanks again for all your hard work and for all the hard work of the employees of the city of Fresno. And last but not least, we celebrated another ribbon-cutting at Viking Village. A huge thanks to the Fresno Housing Authority. Preston and his team, great partnership with Fresno Housing Authority, the city of Fresno, as well as the Fresno Unified School District in opening this forty-unit apartment complex, and they have a gate at the back of the complex that goes into Viking Elementary School. So the kids, after school is out, can still go to the school and enjoy it as a playground and a park. And I think that's one of the first things in Fresno that's had that achievement, and thanks to the Fresno Housing Authority for making that happen with Fresno Unified School District. And on Saturday, we'll host an annual trunk or treat carnival at Wesley Church. Come out and see all the hard work and great things that have taken place at Eldorado Park. And finally, we invite all the residents near Fresno State to come out Sunday, November 1st, to the Sierra Madre Picnic at the mosque at 2111 East Shaw Avenue. That takes place from 11 to 2 p.m., and the mosque was very kind to host this first picnic. And it'll be a great opportunity for all the neighbors to get to know each other, and this is another partnership. District Four has tons of partnerships, and it really helps out our community in general and the city of Fresno. This partnership is with ASI Fresno State Students. So a lot going on, a lot happening, and thank you very much, President.
Next up, we'll have Councilmember Brandau.
Thank you, Council President. And I just have a quick report of a District Two meeting that we held last night in the west end of District Two, where I represent, and I wanted to thank City Manager Bruce Rudd for coming out and talking to us about many items, as well as Police Chief Jerry Dyer and the Head of Public Utilities Tommy Esquera. We had a great meeting. It took a while. We had a lot of good questions and comments, and we covered a lot of subjects, but my favorite part about the meeting was we had several families tell us that nobody's held a district meeting in this area of the district before, so it was really nice to reach out to some new people from the city of Fresno. So thank you very much, Bruce, and your staff for helping us, and my Chief of Staff, Lindsay Bar-Samian, really did a lot of work to make it successful. Thank you.
Councilmember Soria.
Good morning. Thank you. I just have a couple questions for the city manager. Just wanted to see if I could get an update on the youth commission RFP and where that's at. Do we have any idea of when it goes out?
Yeah, we'll get to one during the break.
Okay. And then the other, just update for the public to know, I wanted to see if you could just speak on where the RFP process on the co-mingled recyclables and the green waste is at. Thank you.
So the previous RFP process, I have terminated that process. I'm working with Tommy Esquera and the city attorney in drafting a scope of work. We will be hiring an outside consultant who will come in and review the RFP. I also want to sit down with the council president and clearly define the parameters of a new RFP, and then once we have those parameters, we will issue a new RFP. We're hoping the consultant will be on board within the next thirty days and then have a new RFP out on the street before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier.
Yes, just wanted to let you all know that last night, we did the Housing Element meeting in the Seventh District. I was able to attend. We had five city staff members, we had two community organizers, and we had one constituent that turned out to this meeting. This is very serious. I think we can all agree what we're doing in terms of the general plan, which we passed, and in terms of the housing element, and we're going to rezone the city of Fresno. I think that public participation has always been the cornerstone of what the city's trying to do in terms of bringing people in, getting them educated on land use issues, especially ones that have such huge ramifications for our community in the future. A couple of weeks ago, there was an ad in the Bee, the public notice to attend these meetings, and the ad actually, "City of Fresno hosting public information meeting regarding housing updates going through. Need you to attend. Please see for dates and times on reverse." This is in the newspaper, so I turned the page, and there's nothing on there. So the city's actually been noticing this with no dates and times in the newspaper. So this might be the reason why I had zero constituents there, because the constituent was brought by a community organizer, so somehow it's not getting out to the people, and I think the reason why is because we're running the wrong ad in the Bee. So just wanted to, before the meetings continue in other districts, that we can correct that, and that way we can get this notice properly, so it should include as much public participation as we can. Thank you.
Next up, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's two changes. The first one is the 10 o'clock item, which is File ID 15-878. It's regarding the vacation of portions of public street easements. It should say it is not subject to the mayor's veto. It should not be subject to the mayor's veto. That's the 10 o'clock item. And then on 2A, File ID 15918, it's regarding a workshop on the Housing and Community Development Division Quarterly Report. That has been moved to November 5th, so that won't be on today's agenda.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? Have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-0 with, 5-0 with councilmembers Olivier and Soria absent. Next up, we'll move to the consent calendar. Do I have any councilmembers that would like to remove any item from the consent calendar? Excuse me. Councilmember Brand.
Would like to pull item 1C.
All right. We will now take the consent calendar out to the public. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on any items on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar? All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 5-0 with Councilmember Soria and Olivier absent. Councilmember Brand, you have pulled item 1C. The floor is yours.
This item is Copper River, and it includes the Master CUP, and it's kind of a follow-up to what we did in the general plan. Mr. Roberts, would you come up? My concern is, didn't, we did the amendments on the general plan, that there was this mid-rise, I think, on the western side. Could you address that?
Sure. And, Mr. Council President, members of the council, Jeff Roberts on behalf of Granville Homes and Copper River Ranch Project. There was a series of proposed land use changes that were done as a follow-up or cleanup to the general plan update action. Those were approved. There has been no rezoning yet, but some of those properties included sites that had been designated by this council for the potential of doing mid-rise and high-rise back about ten years ago. It was actually part of the original approvals of Copper River Ranch. We're getting interest in those. We'd like to obviously follow through on that at the appropriate time, and I know, Councilmember Brand, you and I have talked about a potential update on the status of Copper River. It's been about ten years since we've been in production there, so we're happy to accommodate and come back and talk about that if you'd like.
So would you like to discontinue then? The item?
No, we're very much in favor of you taking the necessary action today on the CFD-15. This is something we've had and it works for a couple of years. It is what we told you we would do ten years ago when Copper River was approved. It sets up the necessary maintenance mechanism for the east side of the project, which is a duplicate of, or pretty much a duplicate of what was done on the west side. But before we start development there, we need to get this done, and I know staff have And I know staff has dates out there ahead of us to get this work done this year, so we're anxious to move forward with it.
Okay. So I just wanted to make a point about the...
Sure. We'd be happy to come back and talk more about the Copper River Ranch at any time.
Right.
But today, we're very anxious to see you move forward on CFD-15.
Okay. And again, I recall, and I remember, I was on the planning commission when we approved the Copper River. So I remember the high-rise and the density and the housing element and all that stuff. That consistent city manager of the city's, okay. So, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Soria absent. We'll now move on to item 3A, Resolution Establishing Policy Entitled School Liaison Act. Councilmember Brand and myself are bringing this item. I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Brand to introduce the item. Who'll introduce it?
Thank you, Council President. And this was a collaboration that started probably a couple of years ago. And it's really simple. It's an effort to provide closer communications and better planning between the city council and our school districts. And initially, it was focused on Fresno Unified because of the nexus in our budget, our law enforcement, the dropout rate. There's no question. In fact, Mayor Autry had started back in 2001, I believe, trying to actually get the school board to control that. That never happened, but it did demonstrate the nexus between the city and the school districts. And I was at, about a year ago, with Clovis Unified people and their trustees, and they were concerned that we were never talking to them about their items, too. So what we decided to do, when we developed this committee, was to basically have a three-member subcommittee that would meet with Fresno Unified, Central Unified, State Center, Community College, and Clovis. And that embraces, I think everyone possibly could be Sanger, but that could come later. So each of the school boards, and Member Baines and I will be going out to these boards, who've already been approved by Clovis, they will approve a reciprocating subcommittee. And it's written with transparency. It has the Brown Acts, every meeting that we have, and it does give the option for the city manager and the mayor to be there to elevate, you know, what we're doing here. And how important is, and I'll finish up and let you finish up, Oliver, but basically, things like parks, opening campuses, master planning, you know, where the campuses go, how we do transportation, public safety, there's all kinds of issues that I believe can be resolved on this council committee. I'll let Oliver take it from here.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Brand. And I'll just concur with everything you said and make a couple of additions, just as we speak to our colleagues and the public. It's really not that complicated as far as we see it. We realized that while we do, while we interact with our colleagues over at the school board, that we don't really properly plan with them when it comes to the construction of new school sites, when it comes to the discussions of public safety and parks and green space, or any of those issues. We really have no formal mechanism to do advanced planning and advanced thinking. So we realized that here in City Hall, we play an intricate role in the neighborhoods that schools reside in, and we felt like it was time for us to just have conversations with them and give us the opportunity to get some advanced planning done. There have been, you know, Councilmember Brand and I, Lee said, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, and he's right. We spend a lot of time talking about this, making sure that we introduce the right formula, something that wouldn't be too complicated. We wanted to have something that would institutionalize these relationships for this body even after we're gone. So this will be a standing committee, and we'll appoint three members. We're going to ask our counterparts at the school districts to do the same thing. And the school districts are Fresno Unified, Clovis Unified, Central Unified, as well as the State Center Community College District. We felt like that it was important to have that relationship with them as well. So anyhow, this is really not very complicated, just an effort to have relationships with our counterparts at the school districts. So with that, I'll take this item out to the public, and I know I have one card, and I'll call Howard Watkins up to make public comment on this. State your name and address for the record.
Council President Oliver Baines, members of the council and others, Howard Watkins, 1785 West Dovewood Lane, Fresno, 93711. I rise to support this, and I want to, in the short time I have, give you a reason why this is extremely beneficial to the city of Fresno for reasons you may not realize. This potentially can lead to you saving probably $50 million a year in law enforcement. And the reason for that, and I hope I got your attention, is that there are two books out that I've read, and I've written a paper, I'm going to give you copies of it, Ghosts From the Nursery, Tracing the Roots of Violence, and Scared Sick, The Role of Childhood Trauma in Adult Disease. Both books summarize literally hundreds of scientific studies and research that establish that conception to age two is the most cost-effective and critical time to influence a child having a positive, constructive, and healthy life. For 18 years, I did CPS cases, and I thought Head Start was the answer. It is late in the game when you're using Head Start to change a child to a positive future. The science on this is overwhelming, and you may be hearing the Talk, Read, Sing commercials on TV. That is predicated on this scientific research. In the womb is when the baby develops the brain cells, develops the major organs, including the brain. If the mom's under stress, is taking drugs, is not eating well, all of those are adversely affected, and that's for the life of the child. From birth to age two is when the brain wiring systems come in play. If there's talk, read, and seeing, interaction, holding, the child has a lot of brain development. If that is absent, that development does not happen very well. Virtually everybody in prison had a bad conception to age two. Almost all the people that law enforcement deals with had a bad conception to age two. Now, not everybody has a bad conception to age two, ends up committing crime, but virtually all of them end up with significant adult diseases 10 to 20 years earlier than the average person. Clerk, if I can give you, I have copies for everybody on the dais and one for you. I will email this paper to you. It summarizes the findings in these two books. And what I implore this committee to do, when you're meeting with the school district, is to get them to teach their students, high school, junior high, I leave it up to them, why conception to age two is so critical. You need a license to drive. You need a license to fish. You need a license to hunt. You do not need a license to become a parent. For most people, that is the most significant thing they do, for which they don't have very much training, experience, or even exposure to knowledge on what good parenting techniques are and how critical conception to age two. If we got these three school districts to teach these, their children, their future childrens, that come into the district, will be testing well. They'll be reading by third grade, they'll graduate high school, they'll be ready for Fresno State, they'll be a productive, educated workforce.
Thanks, Howard. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on this? Step forward and state your name for the record. Trustee Caglia.
Yes, good morning to you, Richard Caglia, 253 Fulton, Fresno Downtown. Briefly, if you actually get your head around what Howard just told you, it makes a lot of sense. So Howard, thank you for that point. As a State Center Community College trustee, and not representing the district today, and not representing the board formally, because we have taken no action on this, although we are trying to wind this through our system, I do appreciate the formal acknowledgement of the fact that we are talking about collaborative uses and responsible uses of taxpaying dollars. So as a business citizen and as a business partner with the city of Fresno and a trustee of the Community College, this is a great, healthy discussion to have about collaborative uses and talking together about the types of options that we have moving forward for doing the best thing we can for the city of Fresno, the Community College District, and the taxpayers that cost money out of their pocket. So thank you for bringing this forward today, and I support it.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brand.
Just a few things. Number one, the most important part, the way it's structured is that the council president will appoint a chair, and the chair will then appoint two committee members. And we don't have to today, it can be, maybe should be done at the next meeting. And I would, and they serve a two-year term. And I, it was really important, Councilmember Baines and I, that this is a standing committee. I'd like to finance an audit committee that'll hopefully be here 10 or 20 years from now to keep this process driving forward, to avoid things like where the campus should be on State Center. Should it be in Sega? Should it be in downtown Fresno? Career technical education that's been talked and bannered about, I think with this collaboration of the schools and State Center, I think will be a closer reality. But I would say, any council member who wants to be in this committee, I would, there should be two years left on their term to do that, which would exclude me, so. But I think it's really important that we follow up on this, and I'll make a motion to approve the item.
I'll second it. We have a motion. We have a second. Where are you going to? Councilmember Soria.
I want to thank both Councilmember Baines and Councilmember Brand for bringing this forward. Obviously, education is a very important issue, and I do believe that it is extremely important that as representatives of the city, we are working closely in partnership with the educational leaders in our community, because education really is the foundation of even how our city operates. We know that people make decisions based on, schools or families make decisions based on where is the best school in our community. And so, working in partnership to ensuring that all schools are succeeding, so that all our kids have equal opportunity to succeed and be positive contributors to our community is a great thing. And so I look forward to potentially sitting on the committee. So if there are no volunteers, I would volunteer myself.
Are you lobbying? Can, City Attorney, can she lobby like that right now? I mean, I'm sure that's some kind of violation.
I am one of the newest members, and if my constituents continue to support me, have six, seven years left, so I'd urge you guys to support me to be on the committee. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion, a second, and a full-on campaign by Councilmember Soria. So all those in favor? All opposed? All right. Item passes 7-0. Thank you. Thanks, Howard. All right. We now have item 3B, which we're going to appoint to Councilmembers of Fresno, Clovis, Metropolitan, and Solid Waste Commission, and Greg's going to talk to us a little bit about that.
Good morning, Council. Gregory Barfield, Chief of Staff, to Councilmember Baines. In the 80s, the late 80s, the city, Clovis, and the county all came together and formed a joint powers agreement and a board. Well, come to find out that that board has not met in some time. The county dug it up as they're going through their cleansing of the commissions and realized, hey, there's $22,601 in this commission, and we probably ought to call a meeting to figure out what we do next. And originally, the thought was, until county council and the attorney's office was, just appoint two staff, we'll run over there, we'll have a quorum, and we'll go forward and dissolve it, right? Well, come to find out, the bylaws call for two council members from each jurisdiction and two board members to come. So what we'd like to do is have you figure out amongst yourself which two of you will be moving over and being a part of this. There will be an organizational meeting, we'll have to clean up some bylaws, we'll have to make sure that our staff is present, their staffs are present, and then you all will then figure out, do you appoint alternates to continue moving forward, or do we dissolve this commission? But it was originally put together under the 1975 Fresno County Solid Waste Management Master Plan. And it was really for regional oversight, development of waste facilities by each of the agencies. So we ask that you please appoint two of you, and then I will forward those names to the county and then work with you and your staffs to get this meeting organized. Thank you.
It's Greg. We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wanting to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brandow.
Actually, I've got a quick question. Could you go over again, one more time, you know, what is the goal of the commission? And then, what is, do we, what is it empowered to do? What could it actually accomplish?
Well, so according to the staff report that we have from the 70s, this was following the Solid Waste Management Resource and Recovery Act, which was a California state bill in 1972. And then, originally, the 1975 Fresno County Solid Waste Management Master Plan. Through those two efforts, a joint masters, a joint powers group was put together to look at regional oversight and development of waste facilities by the three agencies.
Okay. All right. Hey, thank you, Greg.
All right. So I've got to appoint two people. So Councilmember Soria, I'm going to appoint you. You need some commissions to serve on, so. And I'm going to appoint Councilmember Brandow as well, because he was talking, because he was looking at me, so.
Council President. Council President.
All right. So we made a couple of appointments here.
Council President. I think I have on too many commissions.
And now, we're going to...
The city manager, is that?
No. It says two council members. And because I'm the president...
I would nominate Councilmember Olivier. He seems to have a lot of time on his hands.
I'm also very interested in serving on the education, the liaison.
We're not talking about the education.
Well, I know, but that's if I, if I, that's the one I want to be on. And you know what, Council President? I think that you exercised wisdom and good judgment in your selections of Member Soria and Member Brandow. I couldn't agree with you more, and so you have my endorsement and full support.
Thank you, Councilmember Olivier. That's very important. All right. So we have two members I have appointed. City Attorney, do, we need a motion for that? How do we, how do we?
I think this one is the council actually needs to confirm.
Just confirm?
Yes.
We just confirm with a motion?
Just a motion to confirm your appointments.
All right. I'll make the motion. All those in favor? All opposed? All right. Item passes 6-1. Thank you. All right. We will now take unscheduled communication. We have Lee Herr, I believe. No, I'm sorry. Daniel Osuena. My apologies. Osuna. Come on down, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
I'd like to address the council, but I'm only going to read three paragraphs, since it's already been read to you before. And I'll start, "To whom it should concern, we, the undersigned community groups and leaders, have come together in a collective to address an important issue we feel has been publicly overlooked by our local politicians. Recently, Donald Trump has gained enormous amounts of publicity for his hateful comments about immigrants, specifically Mexican immigrants, women, and Muslims, and outright anybody who disagrees with him. His outrageous comments not only demonstrate his ignorance about this population, but also expose him as a bully. There are anti-bullying campaigns on every elementary, middle, and high school campus in an effort to combat the bullying epidemic in this country. In schools, we teach our children that bullying is an unacceptable. However, by not speaking out against this public hate speech, we are condoning the bullying and an entire population by a single ignorant man." I'm going to the second to the last paragraph. "For these reasons, we address you now. In order to remind you of the obligation you, as elected officials, have to directly represent the interests and needs of your constituency, we are asking you to fulfill this role by raising your voice and publicly speaking out against Trump and the kind of hate that both inspires and he represents. I'd like to thank you very much for listening, and thank you for your time, on behalf of Los Hormigas." Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. We're going to adjourn to closed session, because... We're going to adjourn to closed session, because our next action is not until 10:15, I'm sorry, 10 o'clock. So we're going to adjourn to closed session. City Attorney, can you make an announcement?
Yes, in closed session, we have existing litigation, City of Fresno versus Lee.
All right, we will be back at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President Baines. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. There's a public hearing to consider a street vacation. We have a request from a landowner, Robert Thompson, who's in the audience, to vacate portions of Chestnut and portions of San Gabriel, I believe. This is property that, his land was bisected, or the parcel that he owns was bisected by Freeway 41 when it was built, and there's additional right-of-way there that's no longer needed. Staff is recommending that you approve the vacation.
All right. We will now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, oh. Come on down, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Council President Baines and members of the council. Robert Thompson, I'm the applicant. I reside at 328 West Antonio Drive in Clovis, and appreciate the time that staff has taken to put this together, and appreciate your support of approving the recommended actions by staff. Thank you, and good morning.
All right, I'll now bring this item back to the dais. It's in Council District Four. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Caprioli on second. Councilmember Olivier, all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Brand absent. All right, we'll now stand in adjournment for five minutes until our 10:15 hearing. We have staff, give a staff presentation for our hearing to consider rezone, application number R-15-007.
Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. Chris Lang of the Development Resource Management Department. The timed item is rezone application R-15-07. Staff has nothing to add to the report, however, staff has prepared a presentation if you would like to hear.
Right ahead. You said there was a presentation? Said, "Go right ahead."
Sorry, pardon me.
I liked his presentation already.
He didn't get off that easy.
All right. Rezone application R-15-07 and the related environmental finding of conformity. Here's a map of the subject parcel. It's located slightly north of West McKinley Avenue on the east side of North Cornelia. This is an aerial photograph of the subject property. As you can see, it is surrounded mainly by, or, single-family residential. This is the Fresno General Plan land use. It is planned for medium-low residential, and it is also surrounded by medium-density and low-density residential. And this is the current zoning of the property. You can see it is AE5 UGM, and it's also surrounded by AE5 and R1 UGM. All right. The rezone application requests to amend the current zoning of the property from the AE5 UGM to the R1 UGM. The proposed zoning is consistent with the planned medium-low-density land use, which requires a minimum of 3.5 dwelling acres per unit. The rezone is proposed to enable or allow tentative tract map T-6091, which is a proposed eight-lot, single-family development, and this will be consistent with the 3.5 minimum dwelling acres per unit. All right. The project is consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan. The property is located in the west area and makes use of many of the public services and facilities available to the property. It plans for a diverse housing stock, well-balanced urban growth, and, again, makes efficient use of the resources and public facilities. Development Department determined on July, or, on July 2nd, Development Department submitted a finding of conformity to the County of Fresno, and no comments were received. On August 19th, the planning commission considered rezone application. There was no public opposition, and the council, or, excuse me, the commission voted and recommended to the city council to approve the rezone. The planning commission also approved tentative tract map 6091 UGM based on council's approval and adoption of the rezone application. Staff recommends that the city council take the following actions: adopt a finding of conformity to the Fresno General Plan EAR, and adopt a bill approving the rezone application Again, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I will be available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now take any members of the public that would like to comment on this item. Please come down, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Capriolo.
Prove to approve.
Well, actually, it's, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Capriolo, and I'm going to ask very gently if you'll allow me to make the motion.
Second your motion.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0.
That was a great presentation, especially the first part.
Thank you. All right. Council, we will now stand in adjournment until 1:30, when we have our LAFCO presentation, LAFCO workshop. Thank you.
Denise Curry, 312 West Valencia, Fresno, California, 93706. Good morning, council members. Good morning, Council President. Thank you for the opportunity. I've come before you really just to give you an update on some information that I think is really valuable for all of you, and that is how the public sees the support for parks. I reported back in August of 2015 that the public, having spoken with them by phone and at the door, that they were very supportive of your plan to fund the Parks Master Plan. The support rate at that time was 74 percent, and that was with speaking with over 9,000 voters in a 15-day period. And what we wanted to do, because there had been so much focus on some of the parks that are being funded now, including Granite Park and Inspiration Park, we wanted to go back to our voters and actually assess and find out from them, what is their sense of the support for Parks Master Plan? Has it changed? And could this information be helpful and useful to all of you? And I'm happy to report that after seven days of talking with voters purely by phone, that we have contacted voters in each of your districts, and they are very supportive of the fact that you have voted to fund the Parks Master Plan. I can tell you that what they are interested in seeing is more action, but this should come as no surprise to you, because as you talk to your constituents, I'm sure that you're hearing that they are all supportive of one healthy Fresno, that they believe that parks and having green space is a way to achieve that. And so the report that I would like to present to you at a later time basically says that in each of your districts, we have phoned voters, on the average, at least 100 or so, in some of the districts a little bit larger, that what we found is that there is actually an increase in support for the Parks Master Plan, for completing it, and for investing and reinvesting in the areas that need it the most, and that would be South Fresno. So I can tell you just in summary that the support is actually grown from 74 percent to 91 percent across the board. They have actually also weighed in on the idea of the 49 acres in District Five, and again, that support is 85 percent. So your voters and your constituents, those who are, who are depending on you to basically advocate for the wishes of the community, have given you basically the green light to actually push forward, not only with the Parks Master Plan, but to reinvest in South Fresno, because that is the area that has the greatest need. I will be happy to share the results with each of you individually, because I think it is really useful for you to know that when we talk to voters, they are really clear about what is important to them. Having more green space is important, it is a health issue, and that is how they see it. So they would like you to do all that you can do in order to make that a reality. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Quintero.
Ms. Curry? I have a question for you. The, in speaking with the voters and everything, and getting the percentages that you're getting, you made reference to the 49 acres in southeast Fresno that I represent. I understand the need for parks, I understand the, the people in the district needing parks, but when you talk to the, to the folks out in the, in the different parts, and specifically in southeast, and making reference to the 49 acres, are you also telling them what is being proposed there, other than green space? And are you also telling them that the city doesn't, at this time, have the money to build a park, doesn't have the money to maintain the parks, and doesn't have the water? Are you telling them that?
So you asked a couple of different questions. So the first part you asked is, am I telling them that the city has other plans? A lot of your constituents are actually aware of that, but they also understand that the land was donated for the purpose of building a park, and because they have been waiting for at least nine years, and because they continue to see other parks springing up in other places, their concern is that they're left behind. So they do understand that there are some other plans, but they also see that building a park in that area would benefit them.
Well, it's difficult for me, I don't know about the other council members, to get calls, and people will not leave their phone numbers, so I can call them back, so, you know, sometimes I need a little bit more information.
We can share some more information with you, and I'm glad that you mentioned that, because what I didn't mention was that our civic engagement program for this last couple of days has been a patch through, which means that voters have been given the option to call your office and just let you know that they do support the idea of parks, more parks...
We're getting those, but they're not leaving a phone number to call back, and that's why I wanted to ask them if they're also being informed of what we're looking at in terms of the 49 acres specifically. So I don't know what, what you're telling them.
We would be happy to facilitate you meeting with any of the folks that we have talked with directly.
I'll look forward to the information.
But yes, they actually, they actually do have that information, and we are sharing that information with them.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment? All right, seeing none, close, we'll close unscheduled communication, and council, we will adjourn until 1:30.
Really? All right.
Are you ready to proceed with our workshop? The floor is yours.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I'm David Fai, I'm the executive officer of the Fresno Local Agency Formation Commission, and with the council's indulgence, I'd like to spend three minutes in three separate-minute presentations to give you a rundown and sort of hit the tops of the waves on things related to LAFCO that are of interest to the city, and also to briefly summarize the municipal service review process, to give you some context there to consider that document. I'm joined today by LAFCO Council Ken Price, LAFCO analyst George Ouk, and the MSR consultant Jennifer Stevenson from PCA. PCA is the consultant that the LAFCO has under contract to prepare this municipal service review. So in the first minute, I'd like to talk about LAFCO. Very general, big-picture image of what LAFCO is. LAFCOs around the state, and there is one in every county, are independent regulatory commissions established by the legislature to plan and regulate the boundaries of local agencies. Those are cities and special districts. We do not have any authority over school districts or community college districts, JPAs, et cetera. It's special districts and cities, and LAFCOs up and down the state plan and regulate those local agencies. So when I speak of local agencies generically, that's cities and special districts. LAFCO is intended to serve as the legislature's watchdog on boundary changes and extension of services and regulation of agency powers to create or authorize additional powers for an agency, not necessarily a city, but a special district that may, under its principal act, have dozens of powers, but may only be exercising one or two. And that agency wants to, let's say, a community service district, it wants to then pick up the wastewater side, it has to come to LAFCO for authorization. What LAFCO looks at is basically, show us the plan, show us the service plan, where the funding is coming from. So that's the watchdog role that LAFCO plays. One of the most important functions of LAFCOs are determining spheres of influence. The sphere of influence is determined by the commission for every local agency, every city and district. And the sphere of influence is the boundary within which an agency is expected to grow. That is the probable physical growth of that bound, of that local service, excuse me, special district, the boundary of its future extension of services, its physical limits. It's important, because LAFCO determinations that follow have to be consistent with that sphere of influence. That's an important part of an agency such as a city, when it wants to grow, it wants to annex land, then that annexation must be consistent with the sphere. So that's sort of an overview of LAFCO. I'd like to note that LAFCO is prohibited from exercising any land use authority. We are essentially boundaries. When I conclude my LAFCO 101, I want to leave folks the image that LAFCO is boundaries. We are city limits, special district service areas, spheres of influence, and what goes through those boundaries in terms of extending services. So LAFCO doesn't have land use authority, that's left up to cities and the county. So talking about the composition of Fresno LAFCO, I'd like to bring that up now. By statute, each LAFCO is composed of two members of the Board of Supervisors selected by the board, two members representing cities, selected by the city selection committee, and those two groups of members then appoint a public member. And for each category, there's an alternate. So LAFCO represents a compromise between the interests of the counties and the interests of the cities. So there's two and two, and then they each have to agree on the fifth member. In Fresno LAFCO, we have supervisors Henry Perea and Brian Pacheco sitting as our regular members, and we have Supervisor Mendez sitting as our alternate. We have Mayor Silva from Mendota, and Mayor Protem Para from Fowler sitting as our regular members. And we did have Chet Riley, who's the mayor of Kingsburg. He has since resigned, so there's a vacancy, hey, there's a vacancy on LAFCO. And that's going to be, I believe, addressed at the next city selection committee, it's going to be held at COG. And then our public member is Mario Santoyo, who used to be with the Front Water Authority, is now closely aligned with the Latino Water Coalition. And then we have, Michael Lopez is our alternate. So that's the composition of the Fresno LAFCO. Some LAFCOs have special district representation. Fresno LAFCO does not. There's a process by which the special districts could organize and seek to get a representation on LAFCO. That comes and goes in Fresno County. It hasn't happened, it's not permanent. And I'll tell you one of the reasons that it may not have happened in just a moment. Now, LAFCO staff is composed of myself, George, and our clerk Candy Fleming, and of course, Ken is our consulting LAFCO council. So it's a very small staff, relatively small budget. We're right across the street in the Physicians Building, so I welcome you to come by, and I'll buy a cup of coffee. We can talk LAFCO. One of the issues that I approach on a regular basis is my budget. Currently got a budget of about $447,000. That's mostly staff, roof over our head, copy machine, Ken, and essentially, it's a very bare-bones budget. If, in fact, the special... If, in fact, the special districts are represented on Lafco, they would have to pay a portion of my budget. But as it stands right now, when I have a budget adopted, I send it over to the county assessor and the county, excuse me, the auditor, they cut it in halves, send half of it to the county. They take the other half and they, they share that with the cities, and the cities each pay a portion of Lafco budget based on their annual budget, a proportion of their annual So let me talk now about the MSR process. The Municipal Service Review, the MSR, is a document that every Lafco performs on every of, every one of its local agencies. In Fresno County, we've got 15 cities, and we have about 133 special districts. 29 of those are dependent districts, which means the Board of Supervisor sits as the board, ex officio board of that special district. That would be your county service areas and your waterworks districts. Other than that, the remaining 101, 102 special districts are, have their own independent, elected or appointed board. And we have special districts covering just about every square inch of this county. The Municipal Service Review is a process that is performed on each one of the local agencies in Fresno County. We're talking about the city of Fresno's MSR today, but this is the same process that is used with all of our special districts. And I would note for the record that your city manager has, has observed that this Municipal Service Review is larger than the last one that was done for Fresno, is bigger than most of the other, in fact, maybe the biggest that was, in, in terms of its physical size and its analysis on any of the local agencies in Fresno County. That's a fact. It's a big city, it's got a lot of moving parts, and I would note that the first run of MSRs that we did in 2007 were done, I would say, first off, because my council's here, they comply with the law, they met, they met the statutory requirements. But when we looked at those MSRs and examined what their function is supposed to be, the commission agreed with me that it is time to make these MSRs more meaningful to, not just the Lafco's determination, but to the city itself, and to the local agency it's being examined. So the MSR is there to essentially provide the data to support the seven determinations. And the determinations are simply conclusions that are identified by statute, and so we have a body of information in the document, and the, the information in that document then supports the seven determinations. And we're also including, in this case, the sphere of influence review. So there are four determinations that have to be made, four conclusions based on evidence in the, in the document. And I'd like to say, the MSR, because it's got three letters, may be familiar to many of you as, as an EIR is. An EIR is a completely different context, and to a certain extent, it's a different climate than the Municipal Service Review. Although they're both large documents, they're both rich in information, the Municipal Service Review is a document that is prepared with the cooperation of the agency, and then is presented to the commission, and the commission then adopts those determinations, and then adopts the determinations for the sphere, and then either makes changes to the sphere or leaves it as is, and that's, that's typically the process. So the Municipal Service Review is a public document. In this case, we started this process well before I, I got here, I've been here about two and a half years. The process to negotiate the Municipal Service Review, the contract with our consultant and dealing with the city, started, I believe, back in 2012. We had a contract or authorization to execute the contract in 2000, early 2013, and we didn't really get started on it till mid to late 2013. The commission wanted to wait until the general plan was updated, and that was adopted in December of 2014, so our consultant then began in earnest the, the preparation of this document, although she had been working before on preparing the groundwork for the MSR. So the MSR was built over a period of years, and I'd like to note that it is a snapshot. The MSR is a snapshot. That is an important distinction to make, because it is not a plan, it is not a regulatory document, although it does support the, the decision of the commission in its determinations. It is not intended, and I think I was somewhat sensitized to this by working with your staff, it's not intended to be used to come back to say, hey, you didn't do this, hey, you didn't do that. It is not a benchmark necessarily for the city. There are recommendations in there that are, that are recommended actions by the city in this draft. It's up to the commission to determine whether those recommendations stay or are modified. But those are recommendations that have been developed for the city to consider. They are not mandatory, they're essentially voluntary. However, if, what the city does with those recommendations is going to help inform the commission when it comes to later decisions. Let's say the city comes in for a sphere change, or an annexation, or, or extension of services, or some kind of action that requires Lafco consideration. Lafco is likely to look at the, at the recommendations that were in the MSR and ask the question, well, the city is asking this, we had a recommendation here, what is the city's response? Did the city do something? Did the city choose not to do something? And so that response by the city, what it chose to do with the recommendation, would be my advice that the, the city council and your staff consider in the long term, in terms of its relationships with Lafco. I think we're looking, because of these MSRs, at a, at a different chemistry between Lafco and the local agencies. This is an independent body, but there's still a paradigm out there that the, that the Lafco is a, is an organ of the county. There's a, there's a mythology, probably based somewhat on fact, because Lafco was once a county department, but this is an independent Lafco. And we strive to balance the interests of various parties, as well as the interests of cities and counties, and special districts, in a, in an earnest way. And so I would approach this commi, or, excuse me, with this council, with the understanding that there's, there's an opportunity to build a new relationship, or to take the relationship that exists and improve it looking forward. Terms of what the city's goals are, the city has to come to Lafco occasionally for, for discretionary applications. And how the city is, how the Lafco may react to those requests is, in large part, going to be based on how the city has incorporated Lafco policies into its, into its request. So I would like, I look forward to working with your staff and with the council. I think it's going to be a very healthy discussion that's, that's, that we have at the workshop next Wednesday, November 4th? 4th or 5th? Yes, I believe it's November 4th, at 1:30 over in the Board of Supervisors chamber. The commission is going to consider the MSR in a workshop setting, take testimony in, and then staff is recommending that the actual decision be continued until December 9th. I know I went over my three minutes, I usually say that just to kind of get low people down into a sense of security there, but I wanted to hit the tops of the waves and make sure that this council was well aware of the general context of Lafco, the composition of Fresno Lafco, the context of the Municipal Service Review for the city of Fresno. As I said, we have the consultant who wrote the, the document. As a matter of fact, in the report that I'm putting together for my commission, we had some, essentially, new information on one of the, one of the recommendations related to the, the convention center. So this is still somewhat of a, of a, a document in flux, it's a, it's ready for public review and comment. I received a letter from your city manager that's gone to the commission as well. So I look forward to working with the council and with your, with the staff as we move forward. And this concludes my presentation.
All right, thanks, David. And just by way of procedure, we won't be going out to the public for public comment, this will be a discussion between basically you and the council members, should they have questions, and we won't be taking any action on any particular item today. So, we certainly thank you for your presentation, I got a, council member already punched up, so Councilmember Brandal, the floor is yours.
Thanks, David. And by the way, even though you went over very concise presentation, which I, I was able to follow, so I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions, and then, and then I'll probably listen to my colleagues, and I might end up with more questions, but I have a couple initial questions, and it's really more detailed than what, than what you made in your presentation, but I, but they're big conversations that we've been having, and that we've had to deal with at City Hall for a while. So last week, we had a conversation about annexations, and so I need to know a lot more, because we were asked to vote on a, on a policy dealing with annexations, and I didn't know enough about it, and I thought it would be more important if we waited until your presentation today, and I think we're going to vote on it during our development code update process, because it will have to deal with our code regarding annexations for the city of Fresno. So right now, when somebody wants to make an annexation, for starters, what types of, what types of applicants are coming to you and saying, we want the city of Fresno to annex such and such a neighborhood or, or area? What type of applicants do you have for that?
The, the applicants can either be an agency, let's, let's, for the sake of clarity, let's just focus on the city of Fresno.
Yeah.
At a habit, I'll go talk off on the special districts, but I'll, I'll focus on the city of Fresno. So currently, the city of Fresno will, the staff will approach the council, whether they request to initiate an annexation, a resolution will be approved, and that resolution is attached to an application, taken across the street with a, with a check, and we begin the process. The other kind of application is a property owner petition. And that's where a property owner fills out this petition, could be extensive, could be very simple, but there's essentially a document that's almost the, the analog to the, to the council's resolution. That petition then is added to an application, check is cut, and it, it's brought over to our office. So by law, a property owner can certainly come to Lafco, independent of any agency, and ask to be annexed. It's a little different for a detachment, that's where the city actually has veto power on the, on a detachment, but annexations, anybody can ask.
What is the, what is a detachment, then? What is the difference?
It's basically detaching property from the city, as opposed to annexing it to the city.
Okay, the opposite of annexing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And for some reason, the statute allows the city to basically veto requests by a third party for that, for a detachment.
Oh, okay.
But in annexation, that doesn't, that's not the, that's not the case.
Now, that policy of giving the city veto power, is that a state, is that part of your policy, or is that a city policy? Or what policy says that the city of Fresno does not have veto power?
Well, in terms of an annexation application that's brought to us by petition, the, the city does not have the ability to say no. If the city was the applicant, then at any point, the city could say, well, we, we changed our mind, or we want to terminate the proceedings, or amend the proceedings and add additional property. So the statute is clear in terms of the process, and it, it comes from statute, that we, we operate by statute, and we're, the statute, the analogy I like to use is, we've got a big glass jar with big rocks in it, that's the statute, and we fill up the remaining with our policy, and that's how the whole process works.
This part about the veto is one of the statutes, though.
Well, that's with a detachment.
Oh, okay.
And a de-annexation.
So on to the annexation.
Yeah.
So for sure, on, how about on the annexations? What if the city of Fresno wanted veto power over annexations?
Well, the, the decision is the commission's.
Okay.
So ultimately, that application moves through the process, it comes to the commission for a decision. Certainly, the city can protest, or at least object, the city can object, the city can then come up with various rationale services, lack of infrastructure, it can make a number of arguments, but it's essentially, it's there for the commission to determine, to balance the pros and cons, and then make a decision.
Okay. So, so if I was asked to vote on a policy that gives, gives the city of Fresno veto power on annexations, you're telling me that your statutes wouldn't allow that?
Right.
Okay.
Now, it, it gets a little, we get into the practice, then, and the way I see it, in, in my capacity as the, as the EO, if an agency such as the city objects to a private property owner annexation, I want to know why. I want, I'm going to ask the applicant, the city, to sit down, and we're going to work it out, because to me, it's a process, it's not necessarily a, a black and white, it is a process that I want to understand, because ultimately, my position is here to be, is according to the, to the legislature, to be the watchdog, although I like to use guardian, but whatever, they said that in a court case. The Lafco is here to oversee and basically render a rational decision based for that, for that request. So if the city is making, or a, a city is, is objecting to an annexation, I want to know why.
Uh huh, uh huh.
And, you know, nine times out of 10, it's, it's based on, maybe it's 99 out of 100, it's based on factual information related to services, related to something in, in terms of the city's general plan, et cetera. But the city cannot, if a property owner petition comes to me, the city cannot stop that.
Got it.
However, the city can, like your neighbor across Willow Avenue, has all, and has probably 10 years now of exercising this policy, the city can choose, as a matter of public policy, that it wants to be the applicant, and that it is sending this notice out far and wide across the land, that the city wants to be the driver. So there's nothing wrong with that, that's very compatible with how the city exercises its powers. However, just, just be known that that doesn't preclude a property owner petition from coming over to Lafco.
Okay, thank you. And then on, on the property owner petitions for annexation, you make, so in that context, it sounds like that's a single property owner, like a monolith, that wants to come in and develop this one section of, that, to be annexed. But what, what about when there's multiple, what about in an area where there's multiple owners? How does that work?
Well, let's, let's look at two, two kinds, two classes of annexations. One is, is on the fringe, like you said, maybe it's a large 40-acre block, Farmer Jones, the horse died, the kids moved out, and they're, they're trying to move on. And you've also got a, what I'd say, an infill, Mayfair, Fig Garden, so those are, those are two different classes. One is inhabited, one is uninhabited. And it's inhabited or uninhabited is not the number of people that live there, it's the number of registered voters in that project area.
Okay.
And if it's 12 or more registered voters, whether it's two acres or 200, it's inhabited.
Okay.
And if there's 11 or less, it's uninhabited. And that changes the balance of protests, but otherwise, it really doesn't affect how I process it. So somebody will come with a, an application, a petition, or, let's just stick with petitions for now. Somebody will, will approach Lafco with a petition and an application and a check, and will begin processing that application. If it's on the fringe, because there's a policy that Lafco has, that there must be no less than 50% of that development, or that project area, subject to imminent development, it's usually accompanied with a tentative map. So the city has already approved the tentative map, approved the pre-zoning, maybe made a general plan amendment, but has otherwise considered and made some level of approval on that project. And it comes to Lafco, we may square off the boundaries, just to create more logical boundaries, although if you look at Fresno's west side, it's not necessarily logical.
Yeah, right.
And that's, and we're, we're both, you know, both of our agencies are responsible for that. Then we'll, we'll process the application, we may reach out to the property owners, we may ask the developer to reach out to the property owners, but that's, I, I don't want to jinx this, that's kind of a cut-and-dried application.
Got it.
It's generally not that controversial. When we get into the infill annexations, then that's where we have multiple property owners, multiple points of view, probably a protest, they don't want to be part of the city because they've been in the county for so long, and that becomes more of a procedural issue to reach out to them, inform them, not necessarily to change their minds, but to help them understand the context, as I said earlier about...
Who does that? So, so say somebody wants to come into an infill area, or an area that's not, certainly not greenfield, somebody wants to come into an area that's already been developed, and they want to annex that property, and say it's two, three owners, and now they have this list of 12 other owners that they need to connect with, and all make a joint decision that they do want to be annexed. So does Lafco do the work of connecting with those other owners, or do the three owners that, that are the applicants, do they need to connect with the other owners? How does that work?
It works in a variety of different ways. If it comes to me, and it's sort of a checkerboard, and I, I think it's in the, in the commission's interest to, to link that up and to fill those checkerboards in, then it may be Lafco that does the outreach. It may already have been done by the city, it may already have been done by the applicant, but it has to be done. Somebody, somewhere, has to do it, because what I want to avoid is the, you know, the checkerboard approach, where everybody gets the notice in the mail, they come to the hearing, and it's right out of the chute, they don't really know the facts, they're not aware of the, basically, the effect of annexation, and they come and protest. If it is a sufficient protest, it terminates the proceedings right there. So it's not as if the commission can take in the testimony against the project, I have to do the bean counting right there of the number of registered voters, and if I get to a point, it's basically 0 to 25% protest, the commission can approve it. 25 to 50%, the commission must call for an election. Over 50%, the commission must terminate it. So there is, in, in my practice has been, if there's no outreach by the time that application comes to me, then there will be outreach. It's going to be me, the city, or the developer, and optimally, it's all three of us.
Right.
Because ultimately, then, the city has to own that land. Developers sold that land, they're moving on, they, they have another project to go to, but who ends up owning it? The city owns it.
What, what is an example? What was the last annexation the city of Fresno did, which was a infill annexation?
I don't remember from my time here, because...
So they don't happen that... So they don't happen that often, compared to the greenfield annexation?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, that's not the way, it, it's not always the way it's been. As the council may recall, that there was once an urban unification program, and I happened to have been a planner on that program. And I think Dave Herb, who spoke here last year, or last week, was a-
Exactly.
Yeah. So there, there was a history of the city actually going out and actively annexing these inhabited areas. And whether it was one or two parcels at a time, or a whole city block, it was done very strategically, so that there was a probability of success with, with each annexation. And it was the intent of the city at that time to fill in these county islands, and these, these peninsulas, county peninsulas in the metropolitan area, and annex those areas.
Okay. And then, in a minute, I want to talk about, about the money behind the scenes of annexing. But one last question. Does an applicant for an annexation have to be a stakeholder in the annexation? Or can, can, can a community group say, I want that section annexed to the city of Fresno? And can a community group go in and organize that type of annexation?
It, that's a good question. And I'm going to give Ken the high sign if I start straying off here, it's very subtle. A community group could organize, but you would need to have the, the landowners or the, the folks with a stake actively involved.
Okay.
And typically, I think it's because most of the petitions that I, that come into me are the property owners. And so I'm, I'm familiar with that, but I believe there needs to be some, like, some stake in the game.
Yeah. A, a community group wouldn't really have standing it to, to submit an application, so it really took usually as a landowner. What Lafco generally sees is when you have a developer who wants to develop a certain number of parcels, and the developer is either a landowner, or has been granted the rights to speak as, in favor of the project. So that's normally how you'll see it.
Okay, Ken, and thank you for that clarification. And I kind of, I'm just, I'm asking most of my questions about probably the minority of your type of applicants, because I understand the developer side a little bit better on their applications. So, but a community group could feel that this area needs to be annexed to the city of Fresno, and they could go out and pretty much commence to lead that, although at the end of the day, we need a stakeholder to sign on the bottom line for that annexation. Is that right?
That's correct. If it's a, if it's an application by petition, which is one of the, one of the two ways of getting an application to the agency.
Yes. And then, do you ever see that happen? A community group going out and taking the lead on something they believe needs to be annexed to the city of Fresno?
Not in my experience.
Okay.
And I, and I think going back many years, as a staff person, I don't recall that. It's always been somebody with, who owns the property.
I, I've been the council for, for 10 years, and the vast majority of these come by developer. I mean, that's, that's the truth.
Okay.
There'll be a developer who wants to develop an area, who will then submit the application to, to the agency if it is done by petition.
Okay.
Well, with dollars, Mike, can I ask you, I believe we have a, a community group right now, actually doing exactly what you're talking about. They're, they're, they're meeting with a, a small urban development outside our sphere. They've got some water and septic issues, and they are talking about and trying to seek support for an annexation.
Yes, that is correct. City manager, Council President of Baines, Mike Sanchez, Development Resource Management. Yes, currently, Self Help Enterprises is a community group that is working actively with one of the disadvantaged communities, basically at Cherry and North Avenues. There are some water issues out there, so they are currently working with both us to try and work out some, some water systems agreements out there, and potentially, it could involve annexation at some point in the future. There is a community group trying to lead another community and inform them about the annexation, and both staff, as well as the city manager's office, has been involved in that process up to this point.
And so, while it hasn't been the practice that, that, that communities have been seeking annexation, most of the time we hear, we don't want to be part of the city. As groundwater rules change, or water rules change, or groundwater quality rules change related to septics, or, or the ability to operate a septic system, when you run to the point where you have no water, or you don't have infrastructure, whether it's water, sewer, or streets, because the streets haven't been maintained, there's no sidewalks, all of a sudden, as, as Dave pointed out, there could be an annexation being approved by Lafco, in which there'll be a unfunded liability, unless there's, in one case, a USDA grant that potentially will fund the water infrastructure, but you have all the other unfunded liability comes along with that annexation.
Yep, and I'm going to get to that in just a second, because I'm just about to shift. But, and so, he's passing the torch on to you, is that it? Okay. And Mike, thank you for that. I didn't catch, what is the name of the community group? Did you? Self Help Enterprises, all right. It's a nonprofit. Okay. Is that the only example of that currently happening in the city of Fresno that you know? Have any other similar projects or annexations been done in the last, say, 24 months?
There's been, I'm looking at Dave or Ken, there was a request by the Cowa Parks, Parks District, by representatives of the Cowa Parks District, who also wanted us to annex that district into the city of Fresno.
But Lafco's never received it.
Lafco hasn't received it, but they are working to try to, again, and it was, well, why don't you talk to the city? And it hasn't gotten anywhere, but that is another example of a district that is looking, or could be looking to petition for an annexation if they could get enough people to support it.
All right, thank you. Did you want to say something else, Mike, when you came up? Okay. All right, I want to shift on to that, shift on to the finances a little bit, which our city manager just spoke about as well. So what I'm afraid of as a city councilman, and I'll, and I'll be transparent and very honest, this is what worries me, is undeveloped or underdeveloped areas of the community that get shifted into the city of Fresno, and the resources aren't there to pay for it. We already feel, I had a district meeting last night that city manager was at, and we're getting massive amounts of demands to, to revitalize services to already existing neighborhoods in Fresno. And if I bring in other neighborhoods of Fresno that don't have the funding or resources for us to provide the infrastructure, I'm really continuing to dilute the, you know, continuing the problem and putting a burden on our taxpayers that I'm going to be responsible for with my votes. And so, so shifting on to the money part of annexations a little bit, that, now that you see where my concerns are, how does that work when the city of Fresno annexes a piece of property? What all do we become responsible for? And, and in Lafco's mind, coming from where you guys sit, what, where are the, you know, what level of resources are, get shifted with that annexation? And I, and by the way, I'm a rookie, so my vocabulary on annexation's not going to be perfect. But when we get an annexation, we become responsible for that section of town, or whatever it is, of our new, new addition to our city. What are the resources that come with it? And then what are the development costs associated with taking that on?
That's a good question. And it relates to a Lafco policy that requires a service plan be submitted with each application. And this is one of the reasons why, as the EO, I'm supportive of the city being the applicant, because there's a lot of information that needs to be presented to Lafco. A mom-and-pop annexation is really a thing of the past. These are much more data-intensive resources that, that I have to examine. So one of the, one of the requirements of any application for annexation to a city is a service plan. There can be a master service plan, which is done once a year, takes into account all the city's services and how they'll be extended. And we can just open it up and say, oh, there's the project, or there's the project, and it's covered. Or there's a site-specific, a project-specific service plan that's submitted. And it's basically the project area where the nearest water line is, sewer line, how nearest fire station, how the police are going to respond, nearest parks, whatever city services are provided, we want to see a description of how those are going to be provided. So that is something that Lafco considers. It's generated by the city. They had been generated by the developers. It's kind of common knowledge where the sewer line is and all that, where the water line is. But I realize that what they were representing is something that, that the city is going to provide. And so I've asked now that a developer can, can create the service plan, but it has to be signed off by the city manager or department head. So I want the city to stand behind that. So the city knows, going into the application process, what services need to be extended, what the limitations are that need to be addressed, what the costs are of, of those services. You've got your development impact fees, you look at the budget of the various departments that provide those services. So the city does the calculus and presents it to Lafco in the application and says, this is how it's going to happen.
Uh huh.
If there's a gap, and it's not going to happen, or there's a unfunded liability, or there's something out there that is a constraint to service, the city needs to know that before it even makes an application to Lafco, because that's really what you need to know as, as decision makers, and that's brought to you by your staff. So all that information is part of the application process, and we take that into consideration. We don't try to second guess. If you say it's a 12-inch water line, I'm, I'm not going to tell you need a 14. You know, you, you hire the experts. We just look for the data to make sure that there's an effort made to, to put the data out there. And because service delivery is of key importance to Lafco, that's something that we look at very closely.
Okay, so if it's the developer-driven one, I kind of understand that. The developer wants to build a product, they've got a lot of economic, you know, goals to attain, and, and the ability to make money on that. They pay fees, and then they, when we, we could do an annexation, they would develop at that property, their fees would pay for that infrastructure. What about this other avenue, where the land has already been developed? Now there's an annexation, there's no, there's no money to be made, but there might, might be some property tax or something like that. But, but all of a sudden, the city of Fresno becomes responsible for a lot of infrastructure without a flow of funds. In my mind, is that, is that potentially could happen?
Oh, sure, sure. If you have an, a developed area, it's already inhabited, and, and the only thing we're doing is changing the boundary from city to county, those people still expect a level of service. They expect the water, and sewer, and police, fire, parks, maybe even homeless. You never know who's living under that bridge, right?
Right.
So they, there's an expectation, and to some degree, by law, the city is required to provide those services. One of the interesting facets of this MSR process is that in working with your city manager, it's become very clear that some of the mythology that I employ has changed. And with your general plan, I believe the first element is a financial element, that's moving that right up front. It's, it's basically saying, it's, it's a matter of policy, that the city of Fresno is more concerned, I should say more concerned, is concerned about the fiscal impact of growth, not just the land use plan, not just the circulation. That's the first thing you see when you open up the general plan, is the fiscal element. And that perspective is new, in as much as new to Lafco, it's new to me, because I'm in a learning process here as well. This MSR process has probably educated me as much as it may have, I don't want to claim to educate your city manager, you may have frustrated him at times, but it's, it's been a good process, because it, it raises that, that, the, the value of that financial analysis to the front. So yes, there is an expense associated with that. It had been my understanding, and this is based on having been a planner for many years, and having been involved one way or another with, with the development of resolutions, and plan amendments, and general plans, et cetera, that the city would be motivated to annex these areas. And the message now is, not necessarily. If there's a negative impact, a fiscal impact, then the city's going to take a, a much more critical look at that.
Right.
And I think that's been a, a game changer for me to understand, and really begin to appreciate the subtleties of, of the, the city's experience. So I guess I'm taking away from my succinct, I'm getting a little long-winded. There is a potential cost involved, and one of the recommendations in the municipal service review is that we roll up our sleeves, Lafco and the city and other agencies, especially the county, and begin to reexamine the paradigms that we've been working with for so many years. That urban unification is something that, that is a, by, by its own nature, a good thing. Because this, the county needs to be involved as well, because there's a message between the county residents and the, and the political leadership at the county, there's a, there's a resonation of, we like being in the county, for whatever reason, and we don't like the city, it's a great way of life. But then you have a sheriff driving, you know, three miles through the city to get to a county island. Or there's a CSA, a County Service Area, providing a park facility, or we've also got a couple of independent special districts providing municipal services. Let's take a look at, at the math now. Maybe the math has changed, but to a certain extent, I know that the, the climate has changed over at the city of Fresno related to annexing these established areas. And I think that's a very important development that is, at least has occurred to me. I've put it in the recommendation that's going to the commission. Whether the commission approves that or not remains to be seen.
In, in the financial gap, when the city's being asked to annex, or the city's not being asked, but when the city has to annex a piece of property, if there's the financial gap that you were talking about, between the services that will immediately need to be provided, or initiated, and then the lack of revenue with those properties, is there a gap in there where Lafco would say, that gap's too big, that's a red flag, we're going to deny this process, or we're at least going to go to the city and, and check in?
Well, the commission has the discretion, if it's not, if they're not obliged by statute, the commission has the discretion to deny a project, and that could be one of the reasons. It could find that it's not in the public interest if, if the agency that's annexing, or would, that would be annexed, would be the owner of that property, if that agency is going to suffer some, you know, financial impact.
Could you create a, could you create a policy, one of the little rocks, you talked about your big rock statues, but could you create a policy that says, if a project has a 15% gap, Lafco will, until Lafco can overcome that 15% or 20% or whatever number works out effectively, we are going to withhold that annexation until that gap can be reduced or met or examined?
Conceptually, yes. But my hesitancy to go beyond concept is, that will be a decision by this body, just like it'll be a decision of the city of Selma and the city of Clovis. So that's, that's really a, in a sense, the financial interest of the, of the agency. Lafco could adopt a policy regarding something along those lines, it could be even that precise, but I'm a little hesitant for, to have the commission, and I think the commission would agree, to start to second guess the, the wisdom of the, of the, of the city in question.
Okay, okay, that's fair. Now I want to switch really quick, and I'm probably going to get the blah, blah, blah award today. But I want to switch real quick to Sega. Could you update us with one of your one-minute updates on Sega?
What would you like to know?
I would like to know if it is a goal of Lafco, or the commissioners on Lafco, to detach Sega from the city of Fresno, or, or what, I mean, I hear things in the community coming in from different areas, and as a city councilman, I need to be keenly aware of what's happening with Sega.
Well, in one minute, Sega currently exists within the Fresno sphere of influence as determined by the commission. So it's there today.
Okay.
The recommendation that I developed, the draft recommendation, is, is an attempt to take the commission's MSR policy, which establishes MSR, Municipal Service Review policy, which establishes spheres of influence, and, and with that establishment or determination of a sphere, projects a 20-year growth horizon. So I'm looking at the, at the policy, saying Lafco policy sets a 20-year growth horizon for these spheres.
Uh huh.
The general plan, though, is not really clear to me, an outside observer, how that, where that timeframe fits into the general plan. I wasn't able to lay one over the other and say, oh, I see, it's bigger, it's smaller, or it's the same. So my recommendation is that the city define and bring us information that defines what, what its timeline is. Now, there's some, at times conflicting information in the record, not necessarily in the general plan. So that is really the challenge for the city to say, or to defend the Sega. I can't tell you, despite what we've, may have all heard, I can't tell you what the commission's going to do with, as it relates to Sega, because we haven't had the workshop, haven't had the hearing, I don't know what their questions are.
Okay.
Et cetera. But that is a, in a sense, it's, it's a burden in hand. Now, that's, that sphere is the commission's. It's not the city limit, it doesn't have any taxing authority, but if it's, if land is removed from the sphere- from the sphere, then that land can't be annexed until the sphere is moved back. The sphere always has to encompass lands that are to be annexed.
Okay. So then the MSR does not make a recommendation on Sega?
It does. It's more of a recommendation on the data supporting Sega.
Okay.
And there's not a, let me rephrase this. The MSR recommendation recommends that Sega be kept as-is, but that the city and Lafco work together to redefine or clarify the relationship between Lafco policy and the general plan or the city's expectation for Sega.
Okay, I'm going to ask a quick question of our city manager. So Bruce, you're hearing this about Sega, and do you feel, and are you familiar with this MSR? You are familiar with it.
Intimately involved.
Intimately, okay.
It's been a sharing experience for both of us, because as Dave pointed out, and I was pointing out to Dave on more than one occasion, the most recent, and it was about four months ago, the Lafco board, Lafco Commission, adopted the Clovis MSR. It was 44 pages. Ours is 200 and creeping on 250. So it was a very detailed, in-depth analysis. And we both, I think, came away from this process with a better understanding of our agency's individual roles. So yes, Dave and I have spoken quite a bit about Sega and the sphere. And what I understand, and he's correct, his recommendation is that the sphere retain, be retained, but that we work together to quantify objectively, like we have said in the general plan, what will, when will we, what will be the triggering events that would open us or allow us to start moving forward with development in Sega or Seda, depending on whose book you're reading. And as I've pointed out to him, there are a lot of variables. And I think we both agree that we anticipate growth to occur over a period of time, but that is contingent upon a number of other things occurring or not occurring, and more importantly, things that occur outside of our sphere. If Lafco decides to start approving development or sphere, or extensions or expansion of spheres in other cities or other areas, where population is shifting, or Madera County is allowing development to occur on the other side of the river, then it will have an impact on the timing of our infill strategies and our ability to meet the goals that were identified in the general plan. What I also pointed out to Dave is that any immediate reduction in the sphere has some unintended consequences that were not identified in the MSR. First of all, the Fresno County's Sustainable Community Strategy pursuant to SB 375 is contingent upon a significant reduction in vehicle miles traveled. So the intensification of land use along the Blackstone, Kings Canyon, BRT corridor, and some other things helped bring those VMTs down, which allowed everyone to continue to do essentially their general plans. Also, if you reduce the sphere, potentially if you eliminated the sphere, you could lose 45,000 housing units. That means the county and everyone else is going to have to figure out where the hundred and some thousand people are going to get relocated. Well, under the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, there aren't very many cities, in fact, I don't think there are any cities, that have enough water available to them to sustain or accommodate additional growth. Tommy and I have looked at the Clovis general plan, and based on their allocation of surface water and the amount of water they have, their general plan is pretty much, they can demonstrate the resources to support their growth over the next 20 years, but after that, not the case. You add another 50,000 residents to that assumption, I don't think they could demonstrate the ability to support that. So we've pointed out a couple of things that would need further discussion, which is why I also support Dave's recommendation, that as we go forward, we are going to have to work with Madera County, city of Clovis, and other stakeholders in making sure that someone isn't inadvertently making decisions or taking steps which result in us having, taking more time in achieving our growth, from growth occurring in Fresno, because it's occurring somewhere else, and then just exasperating a number of other things related to air quality and water quality.
Okay, so Bruce, in your opinion, are you confident that the city of Fresno has got enough data and strategy to show that we should retain Sega within?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And you're working closely with Dave.
Yes.
Communicating that back and forth.
Yeah, and which is why in my letter, I also, I pointed out some of these other issues that were not part of the MSR that should be brought to the commission's attention as well. Again, if you start having to reallocate housing units, give you, the county's general plan, which is interesting, the county's general plan assumes Sega, and it also assumes Westlake, their housing element does. So if you lose any one of those during the course of whatever, the county's got to go back and redo their housing element in their arena. So it's the regional housing needs assessment. So it will, there's a domino effect as to if there was any decision made prematurely. And then, in addition, all that, under SB 375, as of, I think we've got an update coming up in the next two or three years, but in 10 years, you've got to be able to demonstrate that you're making headway on that VMT reduction, those greenhouse gas reductions. If not, the state is going to come in and basically pull the plug on everyone's general plan anyway. So as I've told some other city managers, you need, you better hope we can start hitting those VMT reductions, because if not, we're all going to be sitting around, in five years, trying to rewrite our general plans. And you may see your densities going up in some of the areas that you had anticipated for low to medium residential.
Okay, or we could get another governor.
Huh?
Or we could get another governor. Thank you, Bruce. Thanks, David. And also, David, I did want to say thank you for coming in and meeting with me a couple months ago. It was, we've had a couple meetings, but I really appreciate the time that you showed to the city of Fresno.
You're welcome. And that offer is open to any council member who'd like to talk and learn more about what we do here, and helps me understand more about the city's perspective on things.
Right on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President.
All right, Councilmember Soraya.
Thank you, Council President. And I want to thank my colleague for the number of questions that he raised, because he actually covered some of the things that I wanted to bring up. But I do want to say that I'm glad that you guys did clarify the issue or the question about, do organizations or, you know, other interest groups help neighborhoods that do want to annex? I actually have previous experience on this issue. I know self-help very well and how they are helping communities throughout central California on issues of water, sewer, and so forth. In my previous work, I actually worked with CRLA Foundation, and we worked with disadvantaged and incorporated communities. This is where you see a lot of this policy in terms of annexing for services or just annexing as a whole. And so a very important issue. This issue is actually something that I've worked on in the past, so very familiar with. But I did want to just kind of ask, in your experience, what are some of just generally the policies that cities here in Fresno County have as it relates to annexing? Have other cities, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at the policy that was proposed by the city manager or the administration earlier, but is that something, a policy kind of commonly here in the county from other cities?
It would be the second time that such a policy was brought before a council. I don't want to talk about our neighbor over there, Willow, but I'll just say, another city did this. And you're, I was part of the staff report development that put that together, and it was based, it was based on a project that Mr. Roberts had been proposing. So he's no stranger to the, sort of the wrestling of applications through the process, whether by application, resolution, or application with petition. I am supportive of the city manager's policy. Clearly, it's going to be up to the council to adopt it or amend it, or somehow make it its own, or deny it, I guess. But I'm supportive inasmuch, it is consistent with an annexation program that the commission adopted last year, that had about 10 things that a city could do. It could do all 10 or one, and it would be an improvement over not doing any of them. And one of those criteria was that the city would be the applicant for annexation applications. That's cut and dried, it's in the policy. The city already maintains, and the reason I bring that up is in supporting, it's very consistent with what you're already doing. It is not necessarily inconsistent with a neighborhood trying to annex or wanting to annex. It's not inconsistent with a advocacy group working with a neighborhood to bring them together and support an annexation. It really puts the city in the driver's seat that it is already in. You're looking at services. Service delivery is a big deal. A property owner petition comes to me for, let's say Fig Garden, or a portion of Fig Garden, or something up in the Bullard community or in Sunnyside, I'm going to ask to see the service plan. The city's already involved in that. If it's a fringe development, the city's already looked at the general plan consistency. It's already pre-zoned, it's already approved, a tentative map or a site plan, the city's already involved. By adding the annexation to the city's current powers and its responsibilities, it is only making the city more completely responsible for the success of that project. And I bring up the success because on the administrative side, I've been challenged by property owner petitions where the developers don't have some information, or come in late, or give me half an application and half a check. And that really doesn't happen when I'm dealing with the municipality. So who's got two thumbs and processes these applications and knows there's a better way? It's this guy right here. But the city has something to gain by that as well, not just on the application side or the processing side, or the more comprehensive evaluation of those applications. But each time your staff processes an application, that knowledge is invested in the city, those processes. And sometimes it's the subtleties of process that's invested with your staff. That's not the case when I have a property owner petition. It's invested in somebody else, who may not necessarily have the city's interest in mind, they have their employer's interest in mind. So by creating a cohort of your planning staff, or in the city manager's office, wherever, some managers are going to be involved here, that knowledge, that day-to-day knowledge, and that builds into long-term knowledge, and that becomes the institutional memory that I have seen as there's a gap. There was a great deal of institutional memory here that's sort of gone the way because of the recession and cuts and retirements and attrition. I'm getting a lot of questions like, of very elemental nature. So if the city is the applicant, and you're already handling most of the applications related to that development, or on the infill side, you're handling the service delivery plan and you're managing that data, it doesn't, I don't see any downside to that. Now, I had a chance to speak with Mr. Herb. He came into my office last week before the council meeting, and he was asking me questions along the lines of, how is this going to keep my group from participating at a meaningful level? Thinking that it's going, the city's going to go, no more, you know, you're out, you're in, and basically call the shots. I don't necessarily think that's a problem that's going to manifest itself. I think that's sort of a problem out here, one of the mightbe's, one of the possibilities. I appreciate the question that was brought to me, but if the city is already engaged at so many levels with annexations, I don't see that the city's policy, or the city manager's policies proposed, is necessarily going to stop that. There has to be a rational decision on the city's part. And perhaps most importantly, when we're dealing with a memorandum of understanding for a city application, there is a process in place that eliminates probably 120 days of tax-sharing negotiations. If an application comes to me by petition, the city MOU is not involved. So I have to then approach the county, and at that point, the city has the ability of saying, hey, it's not consistent with our MOU. And that starts that tax negotiation, property tax-sharing negotiation process. So the city does have some cards to play, but I don't see the city's public policy suffering any. I don't see the general plan policy suffering any, and I don't see the citizenry suffering any by a policy where the city of Fresno is the applicant. And I'll tell you, this is based on experience right across Willow Avenue. We implemented this policy, and the development community fell in right behind it. And what that does indicate, though, perhaps the resistance can be from the development community feeling that the process won't be fast enough, or it's delayed, or it's inconsistent. Well, that's a, sort of a handling issue on the city's side. But the more stress that is placed within that process, with any luck, the more streamlined and efficient it becomes. So again, that is a benefit to the city.
But just because the applicant is a property owner doesn't mean that they won't be able to demonstrate that there are funds available, because I know that one of the concerns is, you know, the ability to be able to bring the infrastructure up to par and to provide the services. And so what I'm familiar with is that in a number of the communities that we worked on in my previous capacity, there are a lot of state grants that are available to the local municipalities who do take on the responsibility of annexing some of these neighborhoods. So I don't necessarily agree maybe with your opinion in terms of supporting the policy, and I still have some discussion to have with our city manager on this, because I don't necessarily believe that we should be foreclosing an opportunity. You know, we are in a democratic society, and so I think that people, a citizen, a property owner, should have the right and ability, because that's how the legislator laid out the process. And so if there's that mechanism allowed, let's allow it. If then, within the review, which is your charge with, right, to make an analysis, then we, there's a determination that maybe the fiscal ability of the city to take on the community is going to be challenged, then that's when maybe our local bodies should be taking a stand as to if we're going to take on the neighborhood or not, or the property, the specific property being annexed. And so that's just, in my experience, working with other local city councils throughout the Central Valley, I've seen that. And I've seen a lot of it happen in poor neighborhoods. We don't want to take on poor neighborhoods, and so it becomes really a matter of, you know, what neighborhoods we're going to pick and choose. And so I, you know, with all due respect, I think I would disagree with your stance on the policy that's being proposed, because I do believe that there's an opportunity to demonstrate that there are other sources from the state government or the federal government that could potentially help with the infrastructure, or the deficiencies in infrastructure, to make the annexation successful and not a burden to the city. And so those are just my comments. I think I'll have more of an opportunity to sit down with Bruce to have a deeper discussion as to where I'm at with the specific policy. But I just wanted to kind of get a sense of what other local cities here in Fresno County are doing. And so you tell me that Clovis is pretty much the only one that has a policy like this. And I will say that just because Clovis is doing it doesn't mean that Fresno has to do it. We are a different city, and so doesn't necessarily that means that they're doing the right thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Lee Bran, you're up.
Thank you, Acting Council President, soon to be real Council President. Thank you for taking the time today. And I met you briefly within Steve's office. And a lot of the questions I had have been already asked, and it's just a few questions, and maybe you can answer some of these, I'm not sure. But you went over the composition of the board, and Lafco is a state-mandated organization, correct? So, you know, there's roughly a million people in Fresno County, right? The city of Fresno is roughly 500,000-plus. Has the city of Fresno ever had a seat on this board?
Yes, it has. You're sitting next to a former alternate member, Councilmember Quintero. I have a list here. Somehow I knew I'd be asked that question, so I prepared for it. We have on our website a list of past and present Fresno Lafco commissioners. And when Lafco was first formed in 1963, Mayor Sellen was on the commission. It's interesting to read the minutes, because there was two city and two county members. They voted right there for the alternate public member. They got him on the phone, and he showed up at the meeting, and they continued. It's in the minutes. It's kind of an interesting, old-fashioned way of doing business. But then there was Wallace Henderson from, with the untimely death of Mayor Sellen, Wallace Henderson was on the commission as a full member in 1965. The alternate members have, Fresno, city Fresno's been represented as an alternate member from '65 to '79, and from '87 to '97. So the city of Fresno has had a membership on the commission.
But it's been 18 years.
Pardon me?
18 years. And that was as an alternate, right, not as a member?
That's correct.
Okay. And I realize, this is, maybe I don't, in state law, it seems logical that a city that's half the population of the county would be there as a permanent member of this board. And I'm not putting on you, but is it possible under state law to add, there's five members, right? right? Is it always five members in every county? Can it be seven members?
There are larger LAFCOs, there's a few of them, and usually that's special districts representation. There is special legislation for some counties that requires certain cities to be a permanent member. That, so there's the special legislation route. The membership for the city's side is through the city selection committee. It's essentially the COG policy board minus the member of the Board of Supervisors. And the county clerk or clerk of the board conducts the meeting and there's an election and the members are appointed. What I have communicated to those staff and electeds who have asked this question is that the relationship that Fresno has with the other cities, just like the relationship of the cities whose council members have been appointed to the board, is very important. And to the extent that Fresno can build that relationship and get in effect a seat on the commission, that's one way of having the city on the commission. The other would be special legislation.
Okay. Because I'm thinking in an ideal world, not the city of Fresno would be number one, but number two would be the city of Clovis. Now, I don't know when the last time somebody on, from the city of Clovis was on LAFCO, but a seven-member board having Clovis and the city of Fresno would make a lot of sense. And you're telling me, David, that probably this would be, take a legislative act at the state level to do that. So I'm sending a message to our legislators, you know, both Democrat and Republican. I mean, to me, with given the gravity of what we have here in Fresno and the influence that's obviously with having half the population, yet, you know, not having really a formalized seat on that board. I mean, and maybe I'm going nowhere with this deal, but it just, I've always thought that, when I asked that question, you know, since 19, since 2009, but, but it's, there's nothing within the bylaws and capability of this local board to make any changes like that, correct?
It would be up to the city selection committee to make those changes.
Okay.
To actually appoint somebody from the city of Fresno.
Okay. And I know on the, we talked, you talked about the SEGA, but in the agreement, the MOU with the county, I think we get on areas we annex in the sphere like SEGA, it's 14 cents on property tax, I believe, and areas in, within the city limits is 24 cents. And that was just a negotiated figure back in 2001 or 2002?
Yeah, the LAFCO is not a member or not a party to that.
That was Fresno County.
Yeah, strictly between the county and the city.
And city manager, when does that, that MOU expire?
Sometime next year.
Okay. So I mean, there's another thing I'd like to see a change that, that could be at least equalized or, you know, because really that, in one sense, that really incentivizes infill development because you're getting a bigger tax share, a substantial difference in terms of 24 cents on the dollar versus 14. So that's kind of directly related to what you guys do at LAFCO. Here's a question, I don't know if anybody can answer. How did Fresno, how in hell did Fresno ever end up with so many county islands? I mean, you said 1963, I'm sure, Fig Garden, go back to probably 1920. Does anybody know, or do other cities have as many county islands as we do?
There are other cities that are challenged, but Fresno may be the case study in its boundaries. But I'd like to just note for the record that those may be boundaries occasionally proposed by the city of Fresno, but those are boundaries that are approved by the commission.
Okay.
So that's a, I think that's a constructive question to ask, both of the city, of the city to itself and also asking the commission. The history, as you're probably aware, was almost neck-and-neck development competition between the city and the county. The state saw this happening in all the major metropolitan areas and created the LAFCOs to oversee this. So we may have slowed it down. We may have added more of a data burden, but it is something of concern to staff, how to resolve this. And I think that's a question that's going to require a bit more elbow grease, but that's essentially the intent of one of the, several of the recommendations in the municipal service review. Let's look at what it takes, if it is indeed something that needs to be fixed, if it is a cost, is an additional expense, or can it be resolved to the satisfaction of the neighborhoods and the agencies that provide services?
Yeah, we constantly, we had a meeting about, what, three or four months ago on Fort Washington about sewer connections. I mean, these are issues that come up all the time. They're directly related to costs of the items that Member Brandow had talked about that, you know, and mainly Sunnyside, which I'm sure the owners there probably never want to become within the city and Old Fig Gardens, probably the same. Yeah, Mayfair, there's a large segments that, you know, have always baffled me, how we ever ended up in this situation with these big carve-outs.
Well, if I could help, because my grandparents had a home in Sunnyside. So when they owned that home in Sunnyside, the city of Fresno was a couple of miles away. They weren't islands. It was unincorporated development that was approved by the county, similar to as we see today. Fort Washington was the same thing. It was way out there on your way to Fryett. And so they weren't necessarily islands. We have just grown out and beyond and now they've become islands. As part of, and I think it was about 1969, folks started seeing the writing on the wall. And as we've discussed with the county, the city and the county entered into a JPA in which the county, it recognized the need that these islands were lacking in infrastructure and that at some point they were going to connect to the city of Fresno, which probably goes to the theory of the annexation and the efficiencies of service delivery. And the county agreed that as part of that JPA, that they would create special assessment districts to fund the infrastructure so that when the annexation occurred, the underlying infrastructure, water, wastewater, streets, curbs, gutters, et cetera, would be in place in order to mitigate the future liability on the city. The county has since abandoned that position. In fact, to the point where they don't even take impact fees for development outside the islands. So while the party's intent was probably sound at the time, things have changed. Now you have Prop 218, you can't just go out and create districts without going through an entire process. And then from a policy standpoint, if the county is reluctant to establish special assessment districts, then these annexations potentially in the future have a financial impact on our ability to provide service because then we are then underwriting the cost to install or construct the infrastructure that could have been constructed or funded at the time when an assessment district was easier to develop. And so the conversation around all these annexations, whether they're islands or they're on our sphere or whatever, are all driven by, as Dave's pointed out, the recognition by this body and this administration that there are potential costs associated with annexations. And all the policy says is that before we go off and approve annexations, that we need to be fully aware, our eyes wide open of what these future liabilities could be. Because both Councilmember Soria and Councilmember Brandow are perfect examples where we have Herndon Town and Highway City where the city took them in. And in fact, in the case of Herndon Town, we had to scramble to get state funds because their water district, their provider just walked away in the middle of the night, left that neighborhood without any infrastructure. Sal was around at the time. So we went in and we put in, hooked them up to our water system. We put sewer in. They still don't have curbs and gutters. Most of, a lot of them still aren't hooked up to the sewer yet. And I think Councilmember Brandow is looking for CDBG to help fund the cost of the lateral connections to those, to a lot of the residents. But my point is, at the time of those annexations, we should have had a conversation as to, is there infrastructure in place? What's the cost of infrastructure? What are the grant opportunities that might be used? And if it's CDBG, understand that you're using CDBG for a new annexation at the time that you're trying to deal with your older neighborhoods. But my point is, we need to know that going upfront and/or we got to agree that once we bring these in, we need to take the tax increment or the tax that comes from these annexations and put them into an escrow account to provide those neighborhoods with the infrastructure that should come with being part of the city of Fresno. And so that's what the policy says. If world is different now than it was 10, 15 years ago when we doing annexations and we thought there was really this great, you know, economy or economic development associated with building houses and all the tax, property tax, that may have been true in Prop 13, but when you're looking at property taxes capped at 2%, you're barely keeping up with inflation. And then it's divvied up either at 14 or 24 cents on the dollar. You really can't make sound financials, long-term commitments without augmenting it, for example, with a CFD, which is what we've done because we've recognized that there's some, have to some way offset the cost of providing services. If not, we're going to, I'm going to continue to go to community meetings like Steve's last night where I've got people in the north end of Fresno now demanding the law of the same things that people in the central and southern parts of Fresno have been screaming about for the last 30 or 40 years.
Yeah, things have changed dramatically and the relationship with LAFCO, you know, and statewide, not just here. You know, actually, I think the last annexation I can remember was actually in my district. It was the area south of Fort Washington. That was about, I remember in 2000, I was walking precincts. It was a county island. In 2008, it was in the city. And I forgot the name of that track, but it was actually in my district. The, as I said, LAFCO updates their sphere of influence every five years?
Or as necessary.
Okay. I just, because we, obviously every 10 years, we're upgrading our general plan. So it would be probably better if LAFCO was consistent. I'm assuming in the relationship, let's for example, say that the city of Fresno says SEGA is in our sphere of influence and LAFCO says, no, based on our analysis, we don't think it should be. How do you resolve those differences?
Well, it depends. If the commission takes action to remove SEGA or to amend it, then that is the, the city's obligation, if it wants to continue to grow in that area, would be to approach LAFCO with an application to expand the sphere and provide the information that may have been lacking at the time to the commission to support that request.
And I don't recall, at least in my time here, any major differences with LAFCO and the city as far as the sphere of influence.
Well, there was the issue with SEGA being approved and then reconsidered and then back again a year later for approval.
Was that like in 2003 or '04?
No, it was more like '06 and '07.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. And I know SEGA very well. I mean, I spent about four months studying SEGA with Andreas Borges. And I think the difference was the 2025 general plan, which was, you know, written in 2002 in the past, and the one, the 2035, there's tremendous change. You know, I think SEGA, at that point in time, the demographic data was grossly exaggerated. There was virtually no infrastructure. The costs were, it was, at least in my opinion, it was way, way ahead of its time. I think that the 2035 is more realistic and you mentioned a 20-year timeline. I think, you know, that Clovis unified now is they're going to start the construction of their new campus there on the north, north end of SEGA. So that's got some infrastructure in. There's still a debate going on, on that southeast corner with the state center, may or may not, you know, want to put a campus there. I don't think it should be going there. I don't think the infrastructure's there. There's no population there. So I think SEGA will have, will probably, and we argued this back two years ago, should have been sequenced. I think the whole thing is too big. It should have been probably broken out at least into three parts, with the northern part probably being the one that'll be developed within the next 10 to 20 years. The further south, probably beyond that, and the one in the middle, without those thousand acres, I think that's going to be a long time, but that's just my opinion. Anyway, thank you for your presentation.
Welcome.
Perhaps Councilmember Brand, the modifications to expand that board may not be able to go into process the next 14 months, but maybe the new mayor can initiate that and expand accordingly. I think it's a great idea. Next up is Sal.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I think when I was in alternate, Ken was just a rookie attorney at the time. So anyway, you haven't changed much anyway. Yeah. Councilmember Brandow brought up some interesting points about annexation and just wanted to touch on those. I believe the last, one of the last major annexations that was not developer-driven in the city was in southeast Fresno and that was in the, in the early and mid-'80s, which included the Cowa area and then further east onto Chestnut and Church Avenues. And it just headed east and then I believe it was part of Butler and Hazelwood area was annexed. But those were already existing neighborhoods and the, the big impacts that, that we weren't, the city wasn't able to address until it got a little bit of money into those neighborhoods was to actually start putting in the sidewalks and curbs in some of those. I think when the first thrust as far as improvements or city services besides the public safety was the water and sewer. And the other big impact then was also buying the right-of-way in those areas. So I believe that the, you know, that was, that was one of the last big ones because they even had to come in and put in streetlights and on telephone poles and that type of thing. And there's still a lot of work that isn't, hasn't been completed as far as, you know, getting those sidewalks, curbs and gutters put into those neighborhoods. But I think that that's probably where the term came up, where the comments that Councilmember Brown or city manager was making about the existing islands and the city just moving on and not annexing those, I guess that's where leapfrog development came into, into being used as a, as a term. But I don't, I don't know that we're going to be able to really, you know, at this time, take care of those older neighborhoods and then as part of the Highway City and those neighborhoods that are out there that want to come into the city. It's going to have a big impact, especially with the economy. But, and really, there isn't any way for us to work with you as far as getting monies anyway, is there?
Once it's in the city, it's not really.
It's all the city's babies.
It's all up to the city, yeah.
Yeah, it's one of those, yeah.
But maybe that's, moving forward, that can be something that the, that the city of Fresno and LAFCO work to fine-tune their financial expectations, whether it's a property owner petition or a city-driven resolution. What is acceptable to the city in terms of owning and operating that, the services in those future annexation areas?
Well, the, yeah, because the part I think that's going to be the biggest hit is going to be when, where you have the existing neighborhoods already and it's not the developer-driven because those, Cowa I know was 50s, maybe late 40s, and there was a little section there that was built in the very early 60s. Butler Hazelwood, 40s, 1940s. So there's a lot of, and they're in the city now. But it was interesting that part of Cowa is, is city and then there's like, it's, I think at Eighth or Ninth Street, one side is city and the neighborhood and the other side is county. So I mean, it's just kind of, and we get calls from folks in the county calling us and, you know, how come they have a sidewalk and we don't or why need police services? It's, it's just a big, you know, got to juggle that and tell them. But the, yeah, I remember the, the big hit was in that annexation, Bruce, was buying the right-of-way and putting in the, the water and sewer lines on those streets over there. So, okay, just want to talk about that.
That's a good example. So under Prop 218, how do you use ratepayer dollars now to fund infrastructure for folks who are not ratepayers? So that's why I say the world has changed a lot since we were talking about annexations over the last 10 years. So it creates some nuances that maybe weren't considered even, you know, a short time ago.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilmember Soria?
Just wanted to add one last comment. I know that there's, you know, part of the discussion has been about the fiscal and fiscal responsibility that then the city takes on for some of the potential annexations of neighborhoods that may not have or may not be up to par in their infrastructure. And so just because I worked on this, I remember, so SB 244 actually requires, this was a piece of law.
of legislation that I worked on, Senator Wolks' bill, this was, I believe, a few years ago, passed, actually requires us as a city to have an analysis following our housing element, which we're working on right now and is due at the end of the year, that will look at all the disadvantaged and incorporated communities within our sphere of influence, and to make a determination of what are some of the fund, or infrastructure needs, and also financial or funding opportunities for those. So very familiar actually with, with that piece of legislation. I worked on it a few years ago with, when I was with CRA Foundation. So I guess I look forward to seeing what we come up with in terms of looking at the disadvantaged and incorporated areas that are within our sphere of influence, because if we continue to grow, that's where we will be, you know, finding those, the challenges and looking at what opportunities there are. Because I remember working on legislation that would incentivize local municipalities if we do take on some of these communities. We understand that there is some burden, yeah, but there were some incentives that may be available to cities where we do, or where we could benefit from. So I think really looking at it much more broadly would be very important. And so I look forward to having a deeper discussion in terms of this issue, just because I have some familiarity with the issue of annexation and my interest on the topic.
Any other council members who would like to ask any more questions? Doesn't look like it. Well, listen, thanks a million for being here, taking the time to be here today, and for being very well-prepared, and for giving us very concise and precise answers. Most enjoyable and very informative. So thank you so much for being here, for all those things that you did for us. And I think we all learned a lot today, and perhaps there's a few more things we need to indulge in, but you guys have really brightened up today for all of us at LAFCO. Thank you so much.
You don't hear that that often. Thank you. Thanks very much.
With that, any closing comments by the council? In that case, meeting is adjourned.